Good morning, everyone. Good morning, everyone. It is 8:30 a.m. on this odd day of having city council, meaning it is July the 7th, 2022. And as usual, we will start with the chaplain prayer and pledges. And I don't see Lorenzo Hatch here this morning. So I know often in the mornings he gets called away for some issues. Daniel, would you lead us in prayer this morning?
If you'll please bow your heads. Heavenly Father, we humbly approach you in prayer to give you thanks and praise for all the wonderful blessings in our lives, Lord. We ask you to be with us today, Father, as we make decisions that will affect the city. Hopefully positively, we do everything, Father, to help our citizens. We love you, Father, and all these things we do pray, in Jesus Christ's name. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Under the Texas flag, I pledge allegiance to the Texas, one state, under God, one and
We will now move into -- there are no proclamations today, so we're not sure what's going on. That's two city council meetings, three city council meetings in a row without proclamation. So we will move on to public comment. Issues or concerns not on the regular agenda may be raised by the public at this time. Citizens should speak from the podium, address all comments to the Diaz, begin by stating their name and address or single-member district number, and limit their remarks to less than three minutes. Is there anyone in the audience who'd like to come forward? I see someone coming forward. Welcome.
Oh, my name is Nathan DeRasas.
And where do you live?
I live at 909 State Court.
Okay.
I would like to suggest a city climate action plan. According to GreenHouston.gov, the climate action plan provides evidence-based measures to reduce greenhouse gas emissions and preventative measures to address the negative outcomes of climate change. The plan will demonstrate how the city will adapt and improve its resilience to climate hazards that impact the city today, as well as the risks that may increase in the coming years. Personally, I'm incredibly concerned over the issue of climate change. It worsens our droughts, intensifies wildfires, and makes floods more frequent. These things threaten my family and friends' livelihoods, as well as my own. Taking action by enforcing this plan would reassure me and my loved ones of our own security and safety. Developing a climate action plan allows the city to develop strategies that will not only help minimize the city's carbon footprint, but can also help save money and improve the quality of life of residents. Cool benefits associated with climate action planning include decreased traffic and congestion, improved air quality, better access to parks and green spaces, and cost savings through energy efficiency projects. Please consider a city climate action plan. It would be a great comfort to know that San Angelo is one of the cities leading the way in prioritizing climate action.
Thank you very much. Thank you. Further public comment?
Good morning, Mayor.
Good morning.
City Council, long time.
Long time.
No C. I appreciate the prayer. I think we live in times that we need to do such frequently, praying about love and love. San Angelo is a population of about 103,000 going on 104.
I forgot, did you tell us what district you live in and who you are?
Oh, I'm sorry, Steve Hampton. I'm sorry, Steve. I signed in at the door. I mean, do you want my fingerprint, too?
Sure. Bring the ink forward.
Steve Hampton, 5126 Saddle Ridge Trail, in the single-member 6th district. Again, 300,000 to 400,000 in this population, mostly a lot of low-income salaries. Not part of this low income is a lot of the city employees. Those living, those in the 11th and 12th grading, financial grades, probably wouldn't fit into this category. And you're in the thick of the budget planning season and pretty close to being through, so for the --
No, we've barely started, quite honestly.
Have you already started? Well, that's good. That's even better. I thought I was dreadfully late, and I think that this is the time that we need to recheck our values. We have lots of wind lately, and lots of wind has brought trash to the 306 North Loop. I've gotten up here and mentioned that before, and it was good for a moment, and it's been pretty sad for a long time. High temperatures have been in our news, and we don't have a pool that's functional. It's broken for one reason or another. We don't use fire hydrants around here, but we could use splash pads, which have been talked about for many, for a long time. That would improve the quality of life and be a backup to the pool, and you wouldn't have to man them with lifeguards. High inflation today has put a crunch on everybody's budget. Deflation follows. Family budgets are in danger, and I would ask you to remember that while you're doing your planning. Appraisals are really high. Mine went up, well, I don't want to say, but it went up a whole lot, 100,000. And taxes, tax amounts are, now, you play a part of that.
Please wrap up.
Thank you.
Shane Kelton, I saw you in the room a minute ago. Would you just come forward? And you had a conversation with me yesterday about some of the issues with water lines breaking, cracking. Would you just talk publicly about what's going on due to the temperatures and the, you know, drought and all of that, so people are aware of the things that you're dealing with right now?
And when you're done with hers, hold a minute, because I've got to add on to that, too.
Okay. Very good. Yes, we are, we're experiencing a lot of water main breaks right now. We are seeing a lot of them due to the expansion and contraction of soil with the rains, the little bit of rain that we did have about a month ago. All these temperatures spiking, we are starting to see a lot of fracturing of water lines. So guys are very busy. Had a couple of big ones last night. So again, we're chasing them pretty hard, so, right now.
People just need to understand what's causing these breaks right now.
Oh, yes, yeah. Yeah, and it is. It's mostly expansion and contraction of the soils right now.
Okay. Tom?
So as Allison or somebody from the water department's not here, you're going to be my phone --
I'm in, okay.
I get multiple phone calls from people north of Chabern that see us opening the hydrants to pull the water across town. Can you give a brief description of the purpose of that and why we do that?
Yep. And it's been a little higher lately as we were, we changed our chlorination to clean the lines and to do all that. And so we were doing a lot of flushing to try to move the chlorine through at a faster pace. And so that's what that was about. A lot of times you'll also see it where we have a lot of dead-end mains, or we have something like that, to make sure that we're keeping our chlorine levels at safe levels throughout the distribution system.
Perfect.
Thank you for those comments. Further public comment?
I haven't had time to read the whole agenda, but I don't believe we're going to talk about changing the name of Irving Street. I know we're going to have --
No, we're not talking about it today, but you can talk about it.
Okay. Well, I have no ties to the name either way, but for us to start this again, we knew that after the school name was changed, that they would rest a while and then start something else. To change the name is going to cost a lot of money. I would like to know what the final cost for changing the name of the school was. They had said 74,000. I would imagine it's closer to a million. So let's think about this. Our streets are falling apart. We have potholes, just like the gentleman just said. We have lots of problems with that. So when we start about, think about changing names of streets, it's just the beginning. There's never an end, because if that street needs to be changed, why not Tom Green County and several of the other names? So I think we need to really be serious. I won't be able to come to that meeting Tuesday night because we have the Tea Party meeting. And so think about that before we make any changes on that.
Anna Bartosz, SMD 1. Hi, Tommy. Three things, actually. First of all, on fossil fuels. I hear this so, so, so much. And for a long time, I believed that oil is not a fossil fuel. Y'all may think I'm crazy, but if you can look it up, 1892, I believe, maybe off a year or two, but Rockefeller is the one who came up with fossil fuels to make his product a bit more special and certainly more expensive. So you can look that up. Fossil fuel, oil is probably the most plentiful next to water, what we have. So next time, think about that when you're looking at renewables, because fossil fuel, I believe, is a renewable. Second of all, I agree with Vera. I know, Harry, that you will have a hearing on the change of the street Irving on Tuesday evening. I will not be there, but I'd like to express my thoughts on that. Why are we changing the name? Is there a reason to change the name? And then who's going to foot the bill for all of the businesses that have to change letterheads, everything else? So there's always going to be a cost to that, so certainly be aware of that. And then the appraisal district, I did have, my husband and I had an informal meeting last week. I don't know what part the city council can play, or if the city council talks to the appraisal board. Being over 65 and exemptions, my appraisal should not go up more than 10%. Mine went up over 17%. So I want to know why they automatically do that. I mean, you would think that it would only be a 10% increase considering, but it wasn't. It was over 17%. So I don't know what part the city council will place in that. Does the city, does the council talk to the appraisal board?
One of the issues, Anna, is the state comptroller is the one who says to our Tom Green County appraisal district, you must appraise properties at, I think it's 96% of market value.
But by law, they cannot increase. If you're exempt, home exemption and over 65, by law, they're not supposed to increase it over 10%. But mine was increased over 17%. Who oversees that, is, I guess, my question?
I believe you would talk to the appraisal district. That's the only one who has authority.
I did talk to them. Okay.
Appeal as well.
You can appeal, but --
All right. Thank you.
Thank you, Anna. Further public comment?
Bob Solis, Neighborhood and Family Services. The city hosted our 12th Annual Code Enforcement Officer License and Seminar recently. It was attended by 18 code officers and trainees across West Texas. The seminar provided the necessary continuing education to help maintain licensing requirements. And I would like to recognize several staff members of the city that provided presentations and training. That would be Judge Daniels from municipal court, Holly Voth, Assistant City Attorney, Shelley Pascal, Stormwater Program Manager, and Daniel Fisher, one of our code officers. We appreciate their volunteering spirit, and I can say that their presentation and training were instrumental in the success of this seminar, and we'd like to thank them for their time and efforts. Thank you.
Any further public comment? Seeing none, we will move into our consent agenda. Larry, is there anything from the consent agenda you would like to pull? Karen, Lucy?
No, ma'am.
Harry?
No, ma'am.
Tommy?
No, ma'am.
Tom?
No, ma'am.
Sorry.
I answered for him.
Sorry. With that, let's take, may I have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
So moved.
So moved by Karen, seconded by Harry. Any public comment? Seeing none, we'll take a vote. All in favor of approving the consent agenda, say aye.
Aye.
With none opposed, the consent agenda is approved, seven to zero. It's nice to say seven to zero. We haven't said that for a while. Moving into the regular agenda. Comments regarding items on the regular agenda may be made by the public when each item is discussed as outlined above. Applicants, proponents, and appallants are exempt from the time limit above and instead must limit their remarks to less than five minutes. We will start with 6A, which is consider authorizing the city manager to waive subdivision plat fees associated with preliminary and final plats for Wall Volunteer Fire Department. Aaron, are you on today? You're on.
Good morning, Mayor and City Council. Mr. Valenzuela, Aaron Vanoy, Assistant Director of Planning and Development Services. So last month, the Planning Commission considered a preliminary and final plat for the Wall Volunteer Fire Department off of 87, a spot that's just a little bit closer to the city of San Angelo. They have come forward and requested a waiver of the cost of those fees of right about $600 of the subdivision fees for the preliminary plat and the final plat. Usually, we recommend against that, but we really don't have a recommendation today. We do know that it may, just consider it may set a precedence, because we do work with many nonprofits, and they are, of course, a nonprofit, but we do benefit mightily from their services, and so that's always in consideration. I do believe they do have their fire chief that's here today to kind of make their case, and I'm happy to answer any questions I can for you guys and let him make his cases as --
What do the $600 fees include?
Well, that really includes the evaluation during our budget process of what does it cost the city to provide that evaluation services and present it to Planning Commission. And so it covers that. It covers any newspaper notices or notices that are mailed out. And so the preliminary plat has one fee, and the final plat has a separate fee.
All right. So tell me about this, okay, so it's Wall Volunteer Fire Department. Is this on city property and within the city limits?
No, it is out in the ETJ, where we have plating jurisdiction. It was a piece of property that was donated to them. They're using, I think, 1.5 acres. I might have that, it might be two acres, out of a larger tract. And so they preliminated the preliminary platted, the larger tract, for that property owner, and then their final plating, the piece for them, under the state law that allows them to do that and start development.
And we have not, in the past, allowed someone to not pay these fees. Is that correct?
To my knowledge, that is correct. We have not had that requirement.
The one thing I would say --
Just a minute. Daniel?
Mayor, we do have a mutual aid agreement with the Wall Volunteer Fire Department, and they have assisted with wall fires, sometimes structured fires as well. They do have a ladder truck that is made available to the city if needed. So again, I think it's definitely beneficial to our community to actually assist in this manner for the fee associated with it and what we get in return. I think it pales in comparison. My recommendation is we move forward with approving it.
Council, Rick, go ahead.
The other similar ones we have done while not in the ETJ was, for instance, the county came to us when they were doing the jail, and we waived those fees.
I think I saw Tom or Tommy wanting to make a comment or a question.
No, but I think it's an emergency service, and that gives it a special consideration of some sort versus a nonprofit that's out there soliciting funds for a different purpose. So I'm kind of following with y'all on that.
And is that a motion?
Sure. Making a motion to move as presented, waive the fee.
Is there a second?
Second.
Is there public comment?
Good morning, Council. Mayor, I probably should have just sat down and been quiet the way it sounds.
That would be fun.
And we appreciate that very much. I'll make this very brief. I'm David McIntyre, Assistant Fire Chief at Wall. As you pointed out, we do mutual aid the city, as well as the city mutualizing us. And so we've had a very long, good longstanding mutual aid agreement and supported each other very well, which many of the citizens probably are not aware. We have mutilated during low water shortages, just as we are discussed this morning, was brought up this morning. During a main break, we might provide tanker shuttle services. We have no fire hydrants, so that's the way we are used to bringing water to the fire. We have assisted in low water crossing issues during flooding events. We have even provided water to the community hospital, when it was community hospital, during a main break. We've assisted on wall and fires, as well as structured fires, water support. And we just ask that you consider this as you are, and we appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you for being here today. Further public comment?
Mayor Council, Steve Hampton again. I think we need an attitude of no new taxes. That doesn't mean that we have to forgive everybody else's. Of course, those people are in our neighborhood, and we need to help them, but we also have operating expenses that need to be covered, and we need to not just forgive, I wish we could forgive the citizens as much as we forgive groups like this. Thank you.
Further public comment? Seeing none, we will take a vote. All in favor of passing item 6A, please say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes seven to zero. We will move to item B, consider approving a proposal to allocate the 2022 CDBG and home grant funds for programs and projects and authorizing the city manager to execute the applications, required certifications, related documents, and annual funding agreement for the approximate allocation of 69,743 of CDBG and $447,050 of home grant funds. And Bob, you're on again.
Good morning, Council. The annual action plan project proposals follow our five-year plan, which includes five key objectives. It includes providing decent housing, increasing homeownership, revitalizing deteriorating neighborhoods, increasing the affordable housing stock, and assisting special needs of citizens. You can see by this funding trend that we've been relatively steady the last five years after an initial drop back in 2005. We did receive a decrease of 9,000 of CDBG funds, but we also saw an increase of 30,000 for our home funds. So that was positive. This is our proposal for our home funds. We are asking for 34,705 for admin, 67,345 for first-time home buyers down payment assistance, 60,000 for MHMR special needs tenant-based rental assistance, and 285,000 for new home construction through our CHODO, which happens to be Galley CDC.
On the administration part of it, this always comes up as an issue. Is that dollar amount, a consistent dollar amount in your budgeting of your staff?
We are allowed 10%, so we take the 10% to make sure we recover our increasing admin costs.
And those increasing admin costs are what?
Just basically salaries and those things that happen. I mean, just natural increase of admin, like across the city. I think we all experienced that. For our CDBG funds, we are asking for 133,900 for general grant administration, 116,000, 132 for rehab project delivery, 130,000 for roof repairs, 111,000 for emergency housing repairs, 133,711 for debt payment of the Section 108 loan for producer's part.
When is that come, when is that done?
2030.
Jeez.
2030. We have another, about eight years or so. And then we ask, we're asking for 45,000 for one code officer to focus their efforts in the neighborhoods we target for revitalization. Besides our CDBG programs, our staff manages other programs that include indigene cremation, home load emergency sheltering, continuum of care, rapid rehousing, rental mortgage assistance through the CARES Act, atmospheric weatherization program, and infill housing construction incentives.
With the CARES Act, I mean, when will that be over? I mean --
We're coming to the end. I think we have about $17,000 left. So by the end of the year, we'll be done. We have two big allocations, and both have been used up, so.
And the infill, update us on infill, because that's been a very successful program.
It's been very successful. In fact, they're asking for expansion of it, but no, we used all the funds last year. We've remarked most of the funds this year as well. And again, it's, we got two actual programs. One is for 5,000 per unit, the other one's for infill, infrastructure improvements. And so between those two, we used the money up pretty quickly.
So for the 2122 budget, we've used the 200,000 that was budgeted?
Yes, it was. We have about $60,000 left for the rest of this year.
All right.
Very, very effective. Anyway, we're asking for approval of the proposal. We'll take your recommendations. We will put it into an action, annual action plan, and then bring it back to you in August to send it over to HUD at that point.
Do I have questions from Council? Lucy?
Yes, ma'am. Bob, for the people that are watching, what does the CDBG mean? What does that stand for?
It stands for Community Development Block Grants. They've been around since 1978. It's basically our annual allocation. Every city that's entitled over 50,000 can apply for these, and we're one of these entitlement cities.
Other questions for Bob? Seeing none, then may I have a motion for approval?
So moved.
So moved by Harry.
Second.
Seconded by Tommy. Public comment?
My name is Sylvia Martinez. I live at 818 San Jacinto. My question is, are they gonna hire a new code person that he said that they're gonna be checking for, you know, people that have bought this trash? Because I feel that the one that we have on my side of town is not doing a good job. On my street, we have like a block, you know, a yard that has boats and all of that. How these people are trying to fix their houses and all, and I hope that when you are, they give the tickets, make sure and think of the elderly, because some people cannot afford tickets, and then they don't have nobody to pick up their trash for them. Like, I have to do two lots, and they put a new house. I still have to clean that lot and pay somebody because all the weeds go to my house. So the court, they're not doing their job, and I hope they get a new one.
Are you basically saying code compliance? Is that what you're asking?
Yes, ma'am.
About code compliance?
Yes. And the reason they picked our taxes is not the city, it's for the county, is what they're gonna pick up. They went up on my building, and they went up on my house, too. And it's the county, not the city. And I just felt that she needs to know that it's a -- And I just felt that she needs to know that it's the county. But I hope that they can do something about it, because, you know, a lot of the elderly are getting tickets and they cannot clean there. And I hope that you could maybe get a person or organization that would want to help the elderly clean or somebody, maybe these people that do community service.
Thank you very much for your comments.
You're welcome.
Bob, we used to have every year, years ago, and you took it out of the budget and then you put it back in the budget, that whole program where we take a certain area of town and we blitz it? Is that what it's called, the Blitz program or something?
Yes, ma'am. It's the Blitz.
And what are we doing about that now?
We have, we have no longer, we, I think we stopped that program two years ago. The idea behind the Blitz was to, to fix the siding, paint it, and then move on for section, section by section. That was the concept. I think we did a pretty good job of doing that. Unfortunately, the cost of siding has gone from an average of five thousand to fifteen thousand for a house. And we just, it's just not, it's not cost-effective anymore. So that's what we're gonna, that's what we're asking for roof repairs and stuff, instead of the siding repair. But to answer her question, though, one thing we, one thing we do have, we have a program where elderly can submit a request for assistance and we may be able to help them based on availability of volunteers. Keeps San Angelo Beautiful used to do that. I know Charlotte mentioned that she's interested in maybe bringing that up again, so we can certainly engage, reengage with her, since she's interested in creating that program for elderly cleanup. But if we, but if the code compliance has to go, provide the notices, and we have to abate and clean up and do the things we have to do, there is a opportunity to, for them to redress to the city manager. At that point, we have, there are some criteria that we may be able to provide some relief on the cost.
Mayor, unfortunately, some of these elderly people actually have people that are staying with them or living with them. And it's not the elderly that are creating the mess on their properties, it's certain individuals living there. So we do look closely at those issues when they do come up and we do try to assist however we can. But again, property owners are responsible for maintaining their properties and as Bob said, we do have a, a program that could help those individuals. But when we look into it and there's other people living there, that's where our biggest concern comes in, because they actually can step in there and clean up. So we look at it on a case-by-case basis.
And the other fear that people have is that the city's gonna take their property. We don't. We, we may put a lien on it. If they ever sell the property again, we'll, we'll get some of our money back. But that's how that works. We don't take anybody's property.
Okay. Thank you for those comments. Yes, Harry?
Real quick comment. Ms. Martinez is in my district and she and I have worked on several issues over the last six years. Bob, if you have, visit with Ms. Martinez and get the address of this particular place that she's speaking of and see if there's something that we can do.
Absolutely. I'll, I'll talk to her afterwards and we'll, I'll, we'll, I'll focus on that property.
Thank you. Further questions or comments? Seeing none, then we will take a vote on item B. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
None opposed, motion passes seven zero. That completes the regular agenda of this city council meeting. We will move into clo, we will move into our closed session, the executive session under provision of Government Code Title V, Open Government Ethics Subtitle A, Open Government Chapter 551, Open Meetings Subchapter D, Exceptions to Requirement That Meetings Be Open Under the Following Sections. A, Section 551.072, Deliberations About Real Property Regarding An Easement for AEP and the C Berberic Survey. It is nine oh four. We are adjourned for the closed session. We're at nine forty AM. There are no announcements to be made following executive session, so we will move into item eight on the agenda, which is follow-up and administrative issues consisting of no announcements from executive session. And are there any announcements in consideration of future agenda items from anyone on Council?
Now, I'll throw one out, Ms. Brindo. Julia, maybe you can look and see what we have as far as open, let's see, say, commissions and boards that we need to fill. I don't know if we have an update. I try to stay up on that, but if we have some that are open, let us all know.
Anything else? All right. With that, may I have a motion for adjournment?
If we adjourn.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
It is adjourned at exactly nine forty-one AM. That's amazing.